Okay, good evening, everyone. It's Mon- Monday, Thursday, November 10th, 2016. Calling the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. You had a chance to look at them, they look good. All entertaining motion to approve the minutes of October 24th, 2016, and October 27th, 2016.
We didn't get any edits from anybody? Okay.
Nope.
So moved. A second.
Aye.
It's Monday.
For the record, it's an aye.
Four votes.
Okay. Public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Hershey.
My name is John Hershey, 65, 62. I'd like to give you a week to copy this. Oh, good. I just have a few questions I'd like to ask tonight. This question is-
Thank you.
Well, this question is, why do we as taxpayers, residents, and voters have to hear about the state investigation of possible wrongdoing corruption on Channel 25 Fox News? Why is that? I mean-
Is this a question that you expect an answer on, Mr. Hershey?
Well, I mean, why do we have to hear it on Fox News? I mean-
About what?
About the investigation, the state investigation. You people have been notified the 29th of September or 30th. Why do we have to hear it on Fox News? Did you get something?
The Board of Selectmen receives a lot of inquiries.
Right.
And if there's been a request for documents to the office made by a state agency, we respond. I think that that's already been addressed. In my absence, I think the town administrator spoke to that and has addressed-
Where did he speak to that?
Last week, I think he was interviewed by Fox 25, I believe.
Correct, I was.
Yeah. And that was addressed publicly, so that there's nothing going on behind the scenes as you may or may not be implying. I'm not quite sure what you're trying to get at here.
Well, the 29th of September or 30th, you received some notice from the Inspector General's office. Why did it take until November 3rd to Fox News put it out there? Why didn't you put it out there the 1st of October?
Put what out?
Well, that there's-
That there's been a request for information? You make requests for information on a routine basis, sir.
Investigation. Why didn't you let the people know then?
It's as regular as clockwork.
Why didn't you let the people know then?
As I said before, Mr. Hershey, this is a public comment session.
It seems like a kick-
You've raised your question, and I've responded.
Okay. Why did the Inspector General request information regarding the investigation? Why did they? What was the reason?
I would suggest you ask them that.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, the Inspector General does not respond to inquiries from anybody about any of their work they do, period.
I understand.
So, you know, well, if you understand, you asked us to ask them, we can't ask them. They won't tell us.
I'm asking the question, why does the town, why does the selectmen put it out there that you received some information from the Inspector General's office that we have this investigation on the Town of Hingham? That's all I'm asking. Why did it take this news agency to put it out there to start? You've got the information, the 29th, the 30th of September. That's what I'm asking.
I think your mischaracterization is deliberate. The Inspector General isn't investigating us.
Oh.
Okay?
What are they investigating?
The public correspondence is available for anyone who wants to look at it.
Okay.
There's been no effort at concealing anything.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, because, you know, the innuendos just seem to be hanging in the air.
Keep on coming.
We received a request from the Inspector General on September 29th of a series of documents. Excuse me, sir.
I'd like to have it.
No, no, no. You've talked. Let the town administrator respond to your accusations.
Go ahead.
We received the letter. We immediately responded. We asked all the departments involved to provide any documentation that the Inspector General requested. I think the comment I made on Fox News would be the same thing I would say here. It is not for me to decide, or to opine, or to divine why the state wants this information. My job is to make sure they get it as soon as possible, efficiently and effectively as possible, and we wait to hear whatever they want to know. Period.
Okay. My last question is, I'll ask all of you the same question. It seems to be the 29th, the 30th, the town was notified. When were you notified, Mr. Ginn? When did you get it?
You know what? Direct your questions to the Chair. I think we've responded already. We indicated that when the correspondence came in, it was available publicly. It's an inquiry. We do not know what it's about. We responded appropriately in a timely basis as we are required to, and we know no more than you do.
It was-
Well, we may know less than you do, actually, but-
The public was notified when you got it? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you just said? The public was notified?
Yes, Ms. Murphy. Sure.
Susan Murphy, Special Counsel to the Town. I'd just like to know, just so the public knows as well, the Town gets anywhere from one to a dozen public records requests, whether it's from individuals, residents, companies doing business for who knows who, attorneys representing we don't know who, state agencies for documents on a regular basis, and the staff processes those. Sometimes, if, you know, if there's a question about interpreting it, counsel may get involved, myself, John Coughlin, to say, okay, this is how you respond, these are the documents that are needed. But I would say that if the selectmen were provided with a copy of every public record request from every resident that came, your file would be very large. So I just want the public to realize that this is a regular basis in Hingham and many other towns.
Mr. Hershey, let me respond directly to your question about when the Board-
That's what I'm asking.
You're wondering when the Board was informed. So the process that we have in the office is that all the correspondence that comes into the office goes into a correspondence folder, and it's on the wall in the office, and it's available for the selectmen as well as for anybody in the public to look through. There's a folder for each day of the week, and we keep, I don't know, I think there are like six or seven folders up there with different weeks' worth of information. And as far as I've been, as long as I've been serving on the Board, the expectation within the office is that it is the selectmen's responsibility to read through that correspondence folder. As a matter of fact, there's, like, I initial them to say that I've read things. That helps me remember what I read, and it's a record that I did. But, you know, what we try to do is, when we're in here, for example, you know, maybe we came in five minutes before this meeting, we'll go through the correspondence folder. Or I was in the office on Tuesday in preparation for this meeting, I go through the correspondence folder, and so it's there. And so that's the process by which, as counsel has said, we get an awful lot of different correspondence. It's all gathered in one place. It's not only accessible to the selectmen at all times, but it's also available to the public at all times. So I hope that answers your question.
No, it doesn't, because this isn't just a run-of-the-mill records request. This is a state investigation. So I'm asking, why wasn't it put out? Why wasn't it put out there? It's not on the web. Nobody seems to know about it.
I can tell you that since I've been on this Board, we've gotten several information requests from the Attorney General. We had some things about playgrounds, we've had things for information-
No, this is a investigation. This is real state.
Well, I guess I wouldn't care, I would say that we received an information request similar to many information requests that we get. And with many of those, as Mr. Alexiotis has said, we're typically asked for the information, not given any detail as to what the purpose is, and frankly, if we asked, we wouldn't get an answer. So what we do is, we treat all correspondence that this Board receives in a similar fashion where it is accessible to all members of the Board as well as to members of the public.
Yeah, okay. So you were all notified on the 29th, the 30th?
Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
It was placed in our correspondence file. I believe it's date stamped.
That's the date. I didn't see it on the 29th, but I saw it sometime after that.
Sometime after that?
Yeah, I didn't see it on the 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
Thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to say something before we get on with the rest of the meeting? Welcome, just join us at the mic. Just be kind enough to identify yourself by name and address.
I'm Stephen Dings from Five Boulder Glen Road in Hingham. So I just want to make you aware of a situation that's brewing in Hingham that concerns the safety of the citizens of Hingham. We started a petition the other day to address the situation with the expansion plans for the trustees of the reservations, and they've been very aggressive in their marketing and all the rest of it, driving enormous amount of traffic and putting the risk of the citizens, the visitors, everything. But they're saving. And we're very concerned. So we thought, well, hopefully we can get 100 signatures. Well, we got over 500. It's growing. It's only been on for two days, and it's growing very quickly. It was in the paper today. What we're asking for, and we're asking from everybody, and we wanted to let you know this, we went to the zoning board, we were going to the planning board on Monday, and we're here today to give you a heads up on what we're working on. We're asking our elected and appointed officials to help us protect the safety of the citizens of Hingham and the visitors to World's End by rejecting the trustees of the reservations' expansion plans. The plans include adding 60% more parking, building a new 1,400-square-foot visitor center, a bus turnaround, and a widening of the front gate. We are petitioning to both limit the number of visitor spaces to the existing parking availability and to not building this new visitor center, thereby living within the access limitation that came with the property. So the history, just as a little bit of background, in 1967, Hingham and other South Shore citizens raised the money to purchase the property from developers and entrusted it to the trustees of the reservation for conservation and management. When the trustees accepted the gift, it was with the understanding that that access to the property was via a narrow scenic dead end. This access limitation came with that gift. Why now? What's changed with that situation? The new trustees management, the new management team over the past several years, came with aggressive marketing campaigns and mass invites to World's End, which has created a dangerous situation on Martin's Lane, the entrance to World's End, and the surrounding lanes due to the severe increase in traffic. This pressure is putting the safety of the residents of Hingham and the guests of World's End at risk. In 2002, the trustees had a plan for 30,000 visitors. Today, it looks like that. This petition here is really to stop, to have you guys help us eventually, when it comes in front of you, to say no to their expansion plans, because all they're doing is putting their revenue growth ahead of our safety. And so this petition has everything, it's all the signatures, or 500, it's growing by the minute, as long as you're here.
Thank you.
I can report to you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the members of the Board, that I've already started working on this. I've met with one of the residents, spoken with the DPW. One of the issues that we will have, and I'll present to you, is the roadway wasn't designed to handle that kind of traffic. This is sort of like Foxborough Stadium coming in-
Talking about Martin's Lane.
I understand that, but, you know, when you have a-
Just want to make sure for the audience-
Yes, Martin's Lane. So when Foxborough came into, you know, Gillette Stadium, you know, down there back, what, 60 years ago, 40, 50 years ago, it was in a residential neighborhood, and all of a sudden, 70,000 people are going to show up every Sunday, or every other Sunday. And they had a lot of work to do to deal with the impacts of all those cars flooding that residential community. We're seeing the sort of same thing here, that those roadways were not designed to handle that many cars and the weight of all those cars, and they're collapsing under that roadway. And so we're going to have to think about how we rebuild that roadway. We don't have enough space to really do what we probably need to do, and those costs are going to be borne by us. Yet the trustees are increasing the scope of their property to increase revenue. It's, this is a standard, very traditional subsidy. We are subsidizing, Hingham taxpayers are subsidizing their activities by virtue of providing them the roadways at the cost of the other taxpayers. And so we're going to have to have a conversation with them about how to manage that, and I'm going to bring that to you shortly.
So, good question. Thank you, Mr. Ding, Ms. Ding, for bringing that to our attention. Is there something in the foreseeable future that'll be coming before us on this issue? Could you be specific to this?
I don't know what is going to be coming before you, because the permitting of this, I'm not as familiar with for you folks, so we're not ready to discuss that with you tonight, but I know that the citizens will be coming to you, and you already saw one of them. So the issue is coming to you in some fashion. We're not sure how it'll get to you and when it'll get to you, but I was planning this week to be updating each of you in our weekly meetings that we have. For the public, I meet with each of the selectmen each week, and we update each other on issues that are going on. And so I was going to bring that to each of your attentions and look at a Board meeting either next or the others, in early December, for you to begin opining on this, if you want to wade into it.
Appreciate that. Next week again.
The last part of that roadway system, we haven't fixed, because the seawall is collapsing. We need to fix the seawall before we can fix the roadway, because the seawall collapses, the roadway goes right away, and we don't want to waste that money. But we have serious concerns about how to construct that roadway, given what is being placed on it for demands.
I also worry, because we've gotten some letters, and thank you very much, and we've had, you know, I've had residents who have voices. I drove down there one Sunday just to kind of see what it was like, and one of the things that struck me was that if a fire truck or an ambulance had to go down there in someplace, there's the possibility that it could have a lot of trouble getting in and out of there. And, you know, Martin's, it's a dead-end road, and so that's, you know, that's a little bit, that was one thing that jumped out to me right away. And I know that, you know, as you're finding out, there are different Boards that touch this. You know, the planning board has some purview, and, you know, as residents, I bet there are times when that feels a little frustrating, but I guess what I would say is that, is that what we all try to do is, you know, we all kind of have lanes that we need to stay in as far as our jurisdiction, and that's what we're trying to do, but our town administrator team helps to make sure that we're connected where we should be. You've already been pretty active in meetings, and I would urge you to continue to do so because as we all get educated in this and move along, that's something that is, that's really important. Ted, just a question, but is there any tax revenue that comes to the Town on that parcel, or since we deeded it?
I don't believe so.
Is it? Okay.
So, again, this is, you know, a classic subsidy. We don't receive, we don't realize any services, and yet we're asked, being asked to put on a lot more demands to meet that, to meet their revenue needs, so.
May I respond to your question?
Microphone, please, ma'am.
I would just suggest that if the selectmen are going to put this on another agenda, that the discussion should probably get, because-
Thank you for that.
Just to be one-
All right. But in fairness, and appropriately, as counsel is now raising for us to delve too much farther into the subject matter, it becomes problematic with respect to the open meeting law, and we're pretty sensitive to that, so.
All right, so, one minute. Thank you. The, I agree with you with the-
Who are you, please?
I'm sorry. Elizabeth Dings, Five Boulder Glen Road. I grew up in Hingham, and I live in the neighborhood, and I've lived there for 15 years. And what is sort of a misconception is that there was an art installation installed, and that brought in really heavy traffic. And our concern is that the trustees didn't do anything to prevent the traffic back up, so they sort of created that situation without solving it first, if that makes sense. So that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick comment is, hopefully next week, we'll have a little more information, and to the extent that we're involved in this process, and where we may foreseeable be involved, please reach out to us and be happy to help in any way we can.
Thank you. I was only just to make you aware-
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, just for the benefit of the audience, would this be something within the purview of the ZBA and the planning board?
I have not been involved.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I have not been involved in any of those hearings, but I understand that the trustees have been talking to the Conservation Commission, the planning board, and the zoning board. So all of the permitting boards are touching it in some way.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We're now 20 minutes into the public comment. Anybody else? No, that's good. Not to squelch-
It's okay.
... discussion, but we're way off the agenda. I see the Navy down the back. Sorry, I'm going to invite them up. Now, would you join us, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Keith German, Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Hingham, 104 Kilby Street. I'd like to read just what we're doing tomorrow for our annual event. This was a press release that went out into the Hingham Journal, although a fine publication, I'm not sure everyone gets it. I'd like to make the announcement tonight, so we have maximum attendance tomorrow.
Would you like to sit down, or?
No, this is great, because we have a presentation to make afterwards, and it's probably a little easier to do it from here.
Okay.
So, the Hingham Veterans Council is pleased to announce the itinerary for this year's annual Veterans Day observance, formerly called Armistice Day. Veterans Day 2016 will begin with the Corporal Lawrence St. Laurent Breakfast at the Hingham Senior Center from 08:30 to 10:00 a.m. This event is open to all military, veterans, and their families, sponsored by the Hingham American Legion and VFW Posts. The main event, which will be held in the Sandborne Auditorium at Town Hall, will begin promptly at 11:00 a.m. There will be reserved seating for all military and veterans. The event will be moderated by Michael Puzo, with music performed by the Hingham High School Band. The principal speaker will be former Secretary of Veteran Services of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Coleman Ni. Following the indoor tribute to our Town's veterans, there will be a wreath-laying ceremony and pledge of allegiance at the Veterans Memorial outside of Town Hall. Again, please make every effort to attend and show your support for our nation's veterans. And with that in mind, I have with me tonight our newly-elected State Senator Patrick O'Connor, who brings greetings from Governor Baker and the Lieutenant Governor.
Senator, join us. Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to recognize as well Mary Roy in the back of the office from Representative Murphy's office. As you know, we have multiple towns in our jurisdiction. I do hope to make the breakfast tomorrow, as well as Linden Ponds, but we won't be there for the main event, as Keith had said, but I did want to bring a proclamation from Governor Baker to the Town of Hingham as sort of an apology for not being able to be there in person, but did want to pass along also the governor's regards for all of the sacrifice and all of the veterans here in Hingham. So Governor Baker sends his proclamation, "Whereas the Commonwealth of Mass, Commonwealth's colonial days, thousands of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty; and whereas on November 11th, 1918, the armistice was signed by the Allied Nations in Germany, ending World War I, the war to end all wars, after four years of conflict; and whereas since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans; and whereas there are approximately 388,000 veterans living in Massachusetts; and whereas today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans have made to our country; whereas we honor and salute those who have served our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage; and whereas it is appropriate that all Massachusetts citizens remember the bravery of those who serve their country, so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom." Now therefore, I, Governor Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2016, to be Veterans Day in the Town of Hingham, signed by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor. So I wanted to send this along, so the residents of Hingham can know that there are greetings from the State House tomorrow for all the sacrifices that our veterans have made here in the Town of Hingham. So thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you, Senator.
We look forward to seeing you tomorrow morning, and we completely understand you've got a lot of places to be. Congratulations again. Nice job. Congratulations.
Okay, sure, sure, sure.
Thank you, Keith.
It's you. It's you.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. It was good to hear from the Governor and the Senator, I guess. All right. Next matter on the agenda, public hearing on the request of Shipyard Ventures LLC DBA Almanove for new LLC managers, new LLC members, and a transfer of LLC membership interests. Greetings.
Chairman, members of the Board, Leslie St. Germain with Nick Dermott Quilton Miller on behalf of the applicant. With me is Patrick Reyna from our Chief Financial Officer. This is an application for a change in the ultimate beneficial interest holders. It in no way impacts the day-to-day operation of the restaurant. What this is, is an issuance of membership interests in lieu of existing debt. Paul Wahlberg, I know he has been before this Board previously, unfortunately could not be here tonight, and asked that we express his condolences for not being able to be here. As I said, this is essentially an administrative change and will in no way impact the operations of the restaurant.
Questions from my colleagues.
This is just Almanove itself, no other business, right?
This, yes. This application is specific to the licensee entity.
Good. Is there anything that we would need to know otherwise?
No, everything is in order.
Great. Thank you.
Are you good?
I'm good.
I'd just like to note for the record, my appreciation of Mr. Wahlberg's generosity. At the Selectmen's Cup, he donated a meal for, I think it was like eight to 12 people, soup to nuts and the wine, and that generated such interest that three such meals were raffled off.
That's where he is tonight. That's why he couldn't be-
I think it was the auctioneer that did a pretty good job.
Well, you know, stuff like a vodka and tonic, but that was very much appreciated. I didn't get a chance to thank him personally, so if you could convey that to him on my behalf, thank you.
I would do that. Yeah, I'll be happy to hear.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's get you out of here. I'll take a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Shipyard Ventures LLC, doing business as Almanove, for new LLC managers, new LLC members, and transfer of LLC membership interests, subject to the approval of the Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second one is, is a request, Paragon Funding. What do we have here, Ted?
The second one is 19 Shipyard Drive. I'm going to walk the Board through it, but it's a different stage of the same thing. It's selling, is this across the street?
This is the entity that holds the license for Wahlburgers.
Okay.
It's right across the street.
Correct. It's right across the street, so.
Okay. Everything's in order?
Correct. Everything's in order. It's a transfer from one entity to another.
Questions, anyone?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'll take a motion on that as well.
Sure. Make a motion to approve the request of Paragon Funding Group III LLC DBA Wahlburgers for a new LLC member, transfer of LLC membership interest, and change in ultimate beneficial interest, subject to the approval of the Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for coming in. All right. Last issue here is the Avalon Hingham Shipyard Lip Application.
Yep.
And I asked our real estate counsel to come in, just in the event that there was any question or need for clarification. Susan, could you refresh our collective recollection of what we're being asked to sign on to here, please?
Okay, so just for context, the Avalon Shipyard II project, which was approved back in May, the selectmen entered into a memorandum of agreement related to that project. One of the provisions of that provided that the selectmen would consent to and execute a local initiative program application if requested by Avalon Bay, excuse me, Avalon Bay Communities for the project. And so this is just following through on what had already been agreed to. I'll explain what the lip is in a little bit more detail, but it's... The vote is to... There was already in the agreement, which the selectmen voted to do this. This is a vote to authorize the chairman to sign the various documents so that he's authorized to sign on behalf of the board. The application itself is here, the regulatory agreement, which is one of the documents that will need to be signed, the form of it is in here, and so it needs final approval from DHCD, but then will need to be signed. And then there also the town is going to submit a request to DHCD, which is subject to their approval, and we don't have control over it, but a request that up to 70% of the units, and I don't think they often approve up to 70% of the units, but that's the most you could get, be... Go into the lottery as local preference, and I can also walk through what the local preferences are. So that's what the vote is before you, is to authorize the chairman, because these documents are gonna come in, not all at once, to be signed, and so that they don't become kind of subject to scheduling and those types of issues. This would authorize the chairman to sign them when they are ready to be signed. So the local... When a developer wishes to build a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit, affordable housing project, they're under the statute, they're required to be subsidized in some way. Most common is a subsidy through a recognized subsidized housing agencies. So for example, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, there's a number of them. The Federal Home Loan Bank has one, known as the New England Fund, and then there is one called the Local Initiative Program, and that's when the developer works with the local community to promote the project. Developers are also permitted, and that one gets approved by DHCD, so they're the state agency involved. Developers are also allowed to apply for site eligibility and get a comprehensive permit using one subsidizing agency and then switch to another one. They're not prohibited from doing that. It doesn't happen all the time, but it's not uncommon that it happens. The most typical reason why a developer wants to switch from a subsidizing agency such as Mass Housing Partnership to a lip, which is the case here, is when the developers go through the subsidizing agencies, they typically have to do financing through that agency, and then they're required to finance and pay all the finance charges, et cetera, and all the costs of doing financing. If there's a project that can be done through cash or investment and otherwise without mortgage and financing, then the developers prefer to do the Local Initiative Program, which does not require third-party mortgage financing. So in this case, they're just switching subsidizing agencies from Mass Housing Partnership to DHCD, but in order to do that, it has to be done through this local initiative program with the Board of Selectmen. It doesn't change the project at all. The application that's here just is all the information DHCD requires. This is a very large book for the public. It has the application itself, which is only two pages, but everything that's included in here is all of the background information about the project. The permit's in here, there's images, plans, and most importantly, the affirmative fair housing marketing plan and lottery materials, which determines how residents will be selected. Emily Wentworth is the person designated for the town to review these when they come through the town. She has reviewed these, commented on them, all of her comments were incorporated. The other important document in here is the draft regulatory agreement, which I reviewed and had changes made in order to make sure that the project gets done in accordance with the permit that was issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it is for the exact same project as permitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. They cannot modify the project through this application, and they're not seeking to modify the project through this application, just as I said, to switch subsidizing agencies. So that's what the application piece of it and the regulatory agreement piece of it is. The last piece of it, which is something that the town has to request proactively, is the local preference, and the town has to apply for that to DHCD. I brought some... I kinda did an excerpt of the guidelines in case the board members...
We've already... Just of the board's identification, Tom already received the draft. We, I think, all circulated. I believe he's already developed the draft.
Oh, okay.
We shared it with you already, I believe.
Okay, so I just thought it would be helpful because it's so people would understand what local preference means. So, you know, DHCD, the state is concerned that particularly in towns that don't have a very diverse population, as far as ethnic background, race, et cetera, that if all of the units were local preference, then diversity doesn't get introduced into different communities. So they limit and require their approval in order to do local preference, and what the town needs to do is apply and provide certain information. Some of the information that's required to be applied is evidence that there are waiting lists for affordable housing in the town already, and Emily's done a lot of work. She talked to the housing authority, they have a waiting list for their facility. Avalon's existing project, the Shipyard, has a waiting list, and I believe there's a couple of others that Emily contacted today, and they all confirm that they have waiting lists. So she's pulling together all of this information to demonstrate that there is a need in the community, in the town, and then the state mandates what categories the local preference can fall into. And so for the public, the categories are current residents of the town. However, the town's permitted it from having a durational requirement, so it doesn't matter whether you've lived in the town a week or 20 years. If you live in the town and you show evidence, you know, rent, you have a lease, you have utility bills, voter registration, anything that proves that you are resident of the town, that's one category. Municipal employees such as teachers, janitors, firefighters, police officers, librarians, town hall employees, anyone, anyone who works for the town falls in that category. Employees of local businesses, and then households with children attending the town's schools, and the example they give is Metco students. So if there are Metco students who come here and there's a local preference option, their families get to go in the local preference lottery. And so if DHCD approves that some percentage of the affordable units in this project can be set aside for these local preference categories, then there will be two lotteries. If you qualify for local preference, you go in one lottery, up to that number of units, and if you don't qualify, you go in another lottery. They also do have the added ability, DHCD does, that if they don't believe there's sufficient minority mix in a community, that they can have a certain portion of minority applicants mixed into the local preference. So you might have people that don't fit into these categories but end up in the local preference. So it's a whole formula. It does... It addresses the concerns towns have, that if they're gonna allow 40B projects, they would like their own citizens to benefit from it, but then it also maintains the state's desire to try to keep, you know, create diverse housing. So that's what the local preference is, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody would have if...
Questions from my colleagues.
I just want to thank you for the explanation. It's very detailed, obviously, and as much as everybody can understand it, but I think the one thing we'll all probably agree on, I believe, is that there is a need for affordable housing in this town, and I think we all, and I can say myself in particular, that hoping that there's other ways to get housing that's affordable, especially to our seniors and others down the line, but so aware, obviously, I am anyway, I'm sure we all are supportive of this effort to get local preference.
You know, it just... Emily Wentworth, Susan referenced a letter Emily Wentworth put together, just a couple statistics that jumped out, and Carol, we can get you a copy of this if you'd like. I just want to read one paragraph because I think it really sums it up.
That's a draft.
That's a draft? Can I read it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can read it. We're not gonna distribute the draft. We wanna...
It's a draft.
Make sure there's no typos in it.
I think the information...
It's been half an hour.
I think the information sheds a little light on some recent decisions the board's taken. There are presently only 211 affordable rental units available in Hingham. And remember, we have something like 8,000 households. Approximately two-thirds of this inventory is age-restricted, and that's 84 units at Thaxter Park and 60 units at the Lincoln School Apartment. The Hingham Housing Authority, which oversees the Thaxter Park housing, their current wait list consists of 368 interested applicants, so that can be a wait time that's more than 10 years. The Lincoln School Apartments' management maintains a wait list that takes six to eight years on average. And a recent development, interest in the unrestricted affordable housing development, the existing Avalon Bay development in the Shipyard, that has 23 affordable units, and there are 149 interested residents who are presently on the wait list. So I think I... Those are just some numbers behind Paul's comment, which I completely agree with.
Questions from the audience? Not especially, please, but go ahead.
My name is John Hurstie, 65 Hurstie Street. If an affordable unit is, say, done, and somebody... An application puts in this, a bid, and he gets it, and he gets it, and there's a problem with the unit, he can't move in, there's no occupancy permit, because there's a problem with the building of the unit, what's his alternative? Where does he go?
You mean a structural problem?
Yeah, 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 structural problem, yeah. Where does he go? And we got a problem with it.
Well, he's coming from somewhere that in your hypothetical, he's coming from somewhere.
Ridgewood Crossing, there's a problem up there. Why can't that be straight away?
I can't speak to the particulars that you're referencing.
Susan knows about that, she can speak to that.
We're not gonna get into the particulars of a particular project.
Well, it could happen, it could happen down here, where the unit is ready to go and there's no occupancy permit because it wasn't built right. And now these people are supposed to move in, they can't move in because it's not built right.
Correct. I think that would be the answer, Mr. Healy, Mr. Chairman. They wouldn't be able to move in until the unit was fixed properly.
Yeah. It's been a long time. It's been a long time, Ridgewood Crossing. These people are waiting to move in, they can't move in. They put their money down and they're waiting. No response?
I don't think it would be... I don't think it would be appropriate for the board to respond to an active issue with a developer right now.
Mr. Hurstie, I'm not gonna recognize you to speak if that's how you end your conversations. Did that... You got a respectful answer to it?
Because it involves a committee member. It involves a committee member. It's his unit.
You raised an issue, you got a respectful response, and...
The Building Commissioner's doing his job with it, so it's being addressed through the Building Department.
I'm sure the Building Commissioner has the matter well in hand. These things aren't often easily addressed as suggested by that last comment. Okay, let's keep moving.
There's a motion. There's a... In the vote list, there's a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, Susan could go home.
It's been a long week. All right.
I think it's somewhere on your vote list there.
One of my colleagues gonna help me out and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the following on behalf of the board. One, local initiative program lip application submitted by Hingham Shipyard II Avalon LLC Avalon for the project at 319 Lincoln Street. Two, the regulatory agreement between Avalon, the town, and DHCD for the project. And three, the request by the town to DHCD for a local preference option within the project.
I'll second. Mr. Chairman, I just would say that I will probably abstain from this vote only because I oppose the original memorandum, but I certainly don't want to respect... I respect my colleague's vote and the position of the town, so I don't want to oppose it per se, but just for the record.
Discussion. All those in favor? I abstain?
I abstain.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for coming in and helping us through that.
Thank you, Susan.
The DHCD maze. All right, we're moving along. Next on the agenda is...
Two contracts. These are our salt and sand contracts. We take the low-two bidders. We go through a low-bid process, but we always take two because we want to make sure we have all the access to the supply we need. Wasn't more than a short few years ago that we needed a lot more than we could get our hands on.
Remember that, and if memory serves, the highway actually went out to pick up the salt.
Yeah, they wouldn't deliver it, so Randy, very ingeniously, hired trucks and went and got it. Other towns didn't do that, so we got our salt and sand on the roads. So hopefully we won't see that again.
Okay. You gonna have a motion, please? Unless somebody's got questions, but...
And there's nothing... There's no issues with these folks?
It's very straightforward. You can see the prices over the last 10 years here. These are always the same folks who bid every year.
Okay.
And this is a one-year contract?
Yeah.
Eastern Minerals, South Boston. Eastern Minerals, South Boston, is that right?
Is it really?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Set a contract with Eastern Minerals Inc. to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works CC Solar Salt, delivered at $53.50 per ton.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to sign a contract with Mid-Atlantic Salt to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works Rock CC Solar Salt at $55.37 per ton.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Then we've got a motion here to waive the building permit fee for the Hingham Public Library Trust repairs, and I see the director in the audience.
This is actually very standard. The board always waives fees on all town departments because then they just ask for a budget and you'd have to give it to them, so one hand washes the other.
Makes sense.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to waive the building permit fees for the Hingham Public Library Trust repairs.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye. How is the project going, Linda?
We're ready to go, we're just waiting for the refinding of the documents and the plans, so you just... We need the building permit and the fee waived, so...
Building permit, we initially issued the permit until the fee was paid or waived, so I'm gonna hold up the trust repair.
Do you have a sense of how long it will be to... As it gets colder out and you see snow in Vermont and things, it's only a matter of Thank you. Thank you for staying tonight for this.
We've got approval of a special license. It's not on the vote list, but it's in here, so should we put this in? I'll entertain a motion to approve a one-night beer and wine or cocktails LLC James Detremont at the Hingham Community Center on November 26, 2016.
Second.
Polls in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Mayo, anything you want to add before we say goodnight?
Do you have anything?
Yeah, what was it?
Army Corps? Do you want to bring it up?
Yeah, well, if you want. It's about my meeting today.
Well, just to give them a... Let them know that we're on our hunt.
So we met this afternoon, all day today, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and then consultants, to discuss some remediation investigations being done over the park as part of an ongoing effort that they're doing nationally.
For?
For unexploded ordnance. Investigating that, hopefully we don't have any, and we'll find out. There'll be several public meetings to address this issue.
Tom tells me, though, that they think they might actually find, among other things, a torpedo. So I immediately said, "That belongs to us, right? They can disarm it, but then that's, you know, that belongs to the town of Hingham."
So as Mr. Healy knows probably as well as anyone in this room, it was discussed today that that base was the ammunition depot for the entire North Atlantic Fleet, including the British fleet during World War II. So the ammunition going in and out of that location was extraordinary to say the least.
Quick question on that. Is this the first time that they've ever looked to remediate this problem? Because we are looking back to World War II, right?
Yes, they did it. Yeah, that far back I can't go, but I heard today that several years ago, they did a preliminary site investigation, and that turned up some ground material that made them think that they had to do a more extensive site investigation.
They had done these, Paul, over the years before they transferred the land over to us, but again, some new investigation found something, not ammunition, but material relative to it, so that now they're concerned there might be some there.
So is this something under the ground somewhere in that park?
Is it ground or more likely in the water?
Well, that's what I was thinking. So is there any concern for... So is there any, any concern for constituents, the safety?
So a big part of the conversation today centered around safety and the protocols that are in place. The Army Corps of Engineers has done many, many of these types of investigations around the country. They have protocols in place, the state government, Massachusetts State Government's heavily involved, Mass DEP, and others, all the Army Corps and their consultants will pull all the pertinent permits from the state and get all the, all the right certifications for the people doing things. The town has met, we, I pulled together a meeting with the police, fire, engineer, Bearco Park Committee Chair, and others to ascertain the town's concerns at this preliminary stage. I've issued all of those questions to the Corps and their consultants. I'll be getting answers to them following today's preliminary meeting, or first meeting, and we'll see where it goes.
So there's nothing we need to tell the public today in terms of?
Yeah, we don't know enough yet, Paul. We're going to have full public process meetings. There'll be meetings specifically for this, perhaps as a component to a Board of Selectmen's meeting, perhaps as a separate meeting. We're, we're not sure yet how that's going to happen.
But the Corps will take that lead because they want the responsibility of notifying the public, because they feel that is theirs. I think that's part of why they're starting this at this level. So they have a very, again, this is not the first time they've done this all over the country. They have a pattern with which they go through to make sure that they assess, notify, and protect. And I think that's what, that's what, exactly what Tom's working for.
And I appreciate that.
Making sure our interest is there. So we'll have a lot more comments for the public over the next few weeks.
I just want to make sure that even though they want to take the lead on it, that it's kind of our responsibility to let people know if there's a hint of danger or safety issues, to avoid a certain area or do something, you know?
Tom is, Tom is dedicated, this is one of his main projects, and he's all over it. So we will, as soon as they let us know how we, they want us to dialogue, we'll continue on with that. I, I just don't want to give a sense of panic. You know, my conversation with Tom and his with the Army Corps is, you know, that people walking through Bearco Park are not going to be stepping on landmines. I mean, it's not, we're not looking at those, those kind of things.
Right, right. So I've been assured by the Army Corps today, their consultants, and the Mass DEP, that, that there'll be no liability to fall back on the town, there'll be no, there'll be, all safety precautions will be taken.
At all costs borne by the Corps.
At all costs borne by the Corps. Of the, the, there'll be exclusionary zones, should a problem be found, that'll be immediately set up. Our fire department will be notified, the state police will be notified if there's ever a problem. There's all sorts of protections. So I was satisfied in today's meeting, and we'll see when we get the final plan, how those are all documented.
Thank you.
So is this something you still looking for, in an effort to find?
Unexploded ordinance.
Oh, I thought I said, so what does that mean?
Ammunition that hasn't been used.
What is it called, the un?
Unexploded ordinance.
Oh, okay. So that's, okay. So ammunition that hasn't been fired, or?
Carol, we can talk off.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Yesterday was Election Day, we all know that, right? Two days ago, rather?
Two.
Sorry, it seems like yesterday. I just wanted to recognize for the board, and I'm sure you all know this anecdotally, but I wanted to recognize for the board the work of the town clerk's office, and specifically of Eileen. You know, I got memos from some of the folks in Town Hall asking me to bring it up, so it was nice to hear that, so her colleagues recognized it too, besides all of us. Sue Nickerson is probably the first person in the building every day, by far, longstanding issue. Back when I worked in that office, we used to have a race to see who'd get here first, and she always beat me. Eileen beat her every day for the last several months. We had more extensive polling hours here than in many other communities. I looked at the vote totals, and I don't think anybody in Hingham didn't vote. We had almost 15,000 votes, and, you know, flawless operation. We asked them to move out of a room once, and they broke it all down and put it back up, so I just, I wanted to point out to you, outstanding service, and I think she deserves some recognition to the board.
Absolutely.
We don't usually do proclamations, but maybe you guys could do something for her.
Mary, is there anything?
No, nothing to add.
I got a couple things. One of the things, just kind of a good, good news is reading in the papers recently through some of the sports teams at the high school, the rowing, the women's rowing team won another championship, which is maybe not a surprise, but it's, it shows how much dedication that whole program puts into it and the success they've had. The, the men's soccer team won the other night, and will be playing, and the women's soccer team won, and they're playing tomorrow at 1:00 in Hanover, so maybe some folks will go over and cheer them on. We're always proud of our kids and all the programs and all the schools and the work they do, and obviously they make our town proud. And on a personal note, I, I would just like to thank everybody, we're talking about Eileen, you know, I know she did a phenomenal job, because I talked to her periodically about it, because obviously I was running for office. I want to thank everybody that voted, whether they voted for me or against me, or, you know, didn't vote at all in my particular election, because it, we have to look at the local level and also in the national level, how important every vote is, and it was very encouraging with this early voting, to get so many people, as Ted said, out to vote. Many towns were, were sky-high in terms of their turnout. I think democracy works best when you get everybody involved in the process. It seems to make perfect sense. I also want to thank, or I should say, I want to congratulate, as I already said to Patrick tonight, and I said to him before the election, no matter what the outcome was, I thought he did a, a great job, and he's, and he's a good man, and I, I hope he does good work, as I'm sure he will for the town. And the same for the other folks who ran locally. I know Congressman Lynch won, Joe Moschino won over in, in, from Hull, and I think we'll be well represented, and I look forward, and I'm sure my colleagues do, working with those folks on local and state and federal issues. To the folks that actually, that, that supported me, that contacted me by phone, by email, by text, you know, voicing their support regardless of the outcome, I'm a very lucky man to, to have friends and supporters like you, and I really appreciate everything you did. And to the folks that were wondering how it is, you know, the day after, I will tell you that the day after for me was just like the days before, because I had this philosophy in life that, you know, that I'm just very grateful for the blessings that God has given me, starting with my family. So I will tell you that, that I woke up enthused and optimistic about the things I can do on the board. You know, I'm grateful for the, the town that I live in, all the good things that come here, through the works of people that volunteer, through our elected officials and this community activists. And it is, I am grateful for the privilege to actually be a selectman in this town, to be able to try to help people and do good things. So in terms of, you know, what my days are like, as my colleagues know, we're very busy coming up with budgets, but I, I look forward to getting involved at a higher level with the opioid epidemic coalition that we work with, with the other towns, and I also, in knowing me, and knowing my, my ideals in terms of public service, I will find other ways through charitable work to do as much as I can for this town and the people that need me and need our help. So I want to thank you again for allowing me to participate in this election process. It was, it was a pleasure. I will catch up on a little bit of sleep along the way, but it was well worth it, and I have no regrets. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up with, thank you, Mr. Gannon. I enjoyed hearing that. I'd like to speak to Eileen McCracken's superlative effort. I had the opportunity to vote early. I also, by virtue of a family member being out of the jurisdiction, facilitated an absentee ballot vote, and I just, I was so impressed, pleased, and happy with, with the way that the, the election proceeded uninterrupted, no mischief. I think it speaks to the professionalism and dedication of Eileen's office, as well as the people who worked with her and the, and the volunteers that came forward to make the day a success. I'd like to congratulate Senator O'Connor, Mr. Gannon, for the race with respect to the Senate, Joe Moschino for her election as our newest representative, replacing our long-term rep Garrett Bradley, as well as Kristin Arut for the race that was run. You know, we're at a period in our country's history where we just went through an epic presidential election campaign, and I think the country is sorting itself out at this point. There's trepidation, there's hope, there's jubilation, there's sorrow. I swear that was timed. I just came back from the Shenandoah Valley in Virginia, and I'm a, I enjoy studying the, the events of the Civil War, and one of the things that I saw on the battlefields was a spirit of reconciliation after, you know, bitter, bitter warfare that went on for years. I think the country is resilient, and I think that we're well capable of moving forward as one. I think that's our greatest strength. We can argue constantly, but ultimately we work as a team. Tomorrow is Veterans' Day, and to celebrate the sacrifice and the contribution of the veteran is something that every American citizen should be a part of. So I strongly urge those of you who have the day off, fortunate enough not to be required to work, even though it's a federal holiday, there are realities that come with earning a living, please join us. Join us at the Town Hall if you can. The ceremony is one of my favorite, as a selectman in particular, I just, the patriotism and that spirit of strength and faith and hope is so strong in the room, and I always have walked out of there feeling so much better to be an American and, and to be, you know, Hingham resident. I'm very proud of the community, and so I'd welcome you, and I'd urge you to attend. We're going to start getting into the budget season shortly, so our pace is going to pick up, but before we do so, we have this opportunity to celebrate the sacrifices and the commitment of some of our finest citizens to our country. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.